Good morning, good morning. God bless you today on this beautiful day of liquid sunshine. We give God glory and honor because He is such a righteous, righteous God. As we bow our heads this morning in prayer, we are still in the book of Psalms. And we are covering today for your hearing Psalms 8, 9, and 10. Psalms 8, 9, and 10. Let us pray. Father of all life, we thank you that it is yet another day that you have blessed us with life, help, and strength. We thank you, Lord, for all of the multiplicity of blessings that thou hast bestowed upon us. And we ask God right now, in the name of Jesus, that you would touch and bless every home, every listening ear, those who know you, God, and those who do not know you in the pardon of their sin, that they might hear a word, accept you as their Lord and Savior, and be a part of your family. God, we thank you for being our Lord, our God, and our Savior. Help us to make it day by day. Don't allow us, God, to lose faith nor lose sight of what we are trying to do for you. Help all of us, God, that we might grow in your grace and in your knowledge, that you, God, might be glorified. We thank you, and we ask that you open our eyes, our ears, and our hearts, that we might receive what it is that you have for us to receive today. It is in Jesus' name that we pray now with thanksgiving. Let everyone say, "Amen." Amen, we are so excited. As we look this morning in the book of Psalms 8, we find that it begins by stating, "Oh, Lord, our Lord, how excellent is thy name in all the earth, who has set thy glory above the heavens. Out of the mouth of babes and sucklings hast thou ordained strength; hast thou ordained strength because of thine enemies, that thou mightest still the enemy and the avenger." When we look at these two verses this morning in this book of Psalms, I want us to be very mindful that this particular Psalm is going to begin and end with acknowledging the everlasting excellency of God's name. So we look at this and we said, "In these two verses, that God is to be glorified, that for making himself known unto us," he is going to be glorified. Oh, Lord, our God, how excellent is thy name! And so we're looking at this as we go through the next few scriptures, knowing that he is a God that will be glorified. It says, "When I consider this psalmist in these first two verses," he's seeking to give unto God the glory that he is due to his name. He's talking the birth, the life, the preaching, the miracles, the suffering, the death, the resurrection, and the ascension of Jesus, which comes later, is already being glorified right now. It's already being glorified. And we are to look and to know that this God is a God of excellence. Verse three says, "When I consider thy heavens, the work of thy fingers, the moon and the stars, which thou hast ordained, what is man, that thou art mindful of him? And the son of man, that thou visiteth him? For thou hast made him a little lower than the angels, and hast crowned him with glory and honor. Thou madest him to have dominion over the works of thy hands; thou hast put all things under his feet." Verse seven says, "All sheep and oxen, yea, and the beasts of the field, the fowl of the air, and the fish of the sea, and whatsoever passive through the paths of the seas." And here, verse nine again, "Oh, Lord, our God, our Lord, how excellent is thy name in all the earth!" We are to consider the heavens, that man thus may be directed to set his affections on things above. What is man, so mean a creature, that he should be thus honored, so sinful a creature, that he should be thus favored? Man has sovereign dominion over the inferior creatures. Remember back in Genesis, when God gave man dominion over the animals, over the sea, the beast in the sea, and over the birds that fly in the sky? God gave man dominion over these things. And God is appointed their Lord. So this refers to Christ, because in Hebrews, the second chapter, verses six to eight, the apostle to prove the sovereign dominion of Christ shows that he is that man, the Son of Man. Here spoken of whom God has made to have dominion over the works of his hand. The greatest favor that can ever be shown to the human race, and the greatest honor that has ever been put upon the human nature, was exemplified in our Lord and Savior, Jesus the Christ. With good reason does the psalmist conclude as he began, "Lord, oh, Lord, our Lord, how excellent is thy name in all the earth!" Amen. Let us look now at Psalm nine, as we begin to read Psalm nine. "I will praise thee, oh, Lord, with my whole heart; I will show forth all the marvelous works; I will be glad and rejoice in thee; I will sing praise to thy name. O thou most high, when mine enemies are turned back, they shall fall and perish at thy presence; for thou hast maintained my right and my cause; thou sayest in the throne, 'Judging right.' Thou hast rebuked the heathen, and thou hast destroyed the wicked; thou hast put out their name forever and ever. O thou enemy, destructions are come to a perpetual end, and thou hast destroyed cities; their memorial is perished with them. But the Lord," and then please notice, I love when it gives us a "but," "But the Lord, but shall endure forever; he hath prepared his throne for judgment, and he shall judge the world in righteousness; he shall minister judgment to the people in a rightness. The Lord also will be a refuge, hallelujah, for the oppressed, a refuge in times of trouble." And verse 10, "And they that know thy name shall put their trust in thee; for thou, Lord, hast not forsaken them that seek thee." You see, David here praises God for protecting his people. David is giving God the praise. And he goes on, and as he says, "If we would praise God, acceptable, we must praise him in sincerity." God recognizes haphazard praises, haphazard prayers, haphazard glorifications. He knows a sincere heart. So whenever we are to praise God, it should always be in sincerity. Amen. And we are praising him, the Bible says, "with your whole heart." Because if I'm praising him in sincerity, it would have to be my whole heart, not a part, not a section, not a fourth, not a third, not a fifth, but I'm praising God and giving him glory with all of my heart, with my whole being, on acknowledging the God of my salvation. When we give thanks for some one particular mercy, we should remember former mercies. If we're giving God glory, thank you for what you've done for me today. How can we say that and not really be reflective of what God did on yesterday, yester week, yester month, yester year? God is still delivering, beloveds. 2020, God is still working some things out. Our joy must not be in the gift as much as it is in the giver. Lord, when the Lord blesses us with something, we're so quick to say, "God, I thank you for my new house, I thank you for my new job, God, I thank you for my new clothes, I thank you for my new child." But we need to be more grateful for the giver. God, I give you glory for all that you have done for me. Thank you, Lord. You are to be praised, you are to be glorified for all that you have blessed me with. So our joy must not be so much in the gift as our joy should be in remembrance to the giver. Amen. You've gotten up this morning, some of you are dressed, some of you are still in jammies, whatever your situation is. But when you opened your eyes, did you say, "Thank you, Jesus, for yet another day, a day that you've never seen before, a day that you will never see again exactly like this day? Thank God, thank you, Lord, for waking me up. Thank you, Lord, for giving me the articulations of my lips. Thank you, Lord, that I was able to open my eyes. Thank you, God." Because, beloveds, he didn't have to do it. But I think all of us are so glad that he did. Amen. His people, made by faith, flee to him as their refuge, because the word says that he can be our refuge. Amen, that he will be our refuge. And as we are looking at that, it knows that we can flee to him, we can depend on him and his power, because he promises us safety. Amen. So that no real earth shall be done to us. Those who know him, to be a God of truth, he is a God of faithfulness, so that no real thing can hurt us. No weapon formed against us shall prosper. So we will rejoice in the word of God's promises. Amen. Now, as we look at Psalm, verse 11 through 20 this morning, we are to sing praises to the Lord which dwelleth in Zion, declare among the people his doings. "When he maketh inquisition for blood, he remembereth them." It seems like I missed a verse, I'm sorry. Verse 11 says, "Sing praises to the Lord which dwelleth in Zion, declare among the people his doings." Verse 12, "When he maketh inquisition for blood, he remembereth them; he forgetteth not the cry of the humble. Have mercy upon me, oh, Lord; consider my trouble when I suffer of them that hate me, thou that lifted me up from the gates of death, that I may show forth all thy praise in the gates of the daughter of Zion. I will rejoice in thy salvation." It's saying really, whatever I'm going through, I know there's some that hate me or persecute me, some that are jealous, some that might have malice, strife, envy, whatever. But Father God, I'm going to remain humble, and I am going to ask you to help me to deal with this that's going on. So have mercy upon me, oh, Lord. Consider my trouble, because we know we're going to have trouble. I suffer of them that hate me, that thou lifted me from the gates of death, that I may show forth all thy praise in the gates of the daughter of Zion. I'm going to rejoice in thy salvation. Whatever we're going through, beloveds, we need to set an example and show others that we can still praise God even in the midst of our storm. Verse 15 says, "The heathen are sunk down in the pit that they made; in the net which they hid is their own foot taken. The Lord is known by the judgment which he executed." The Lord is known by the judgment which he executed. "The wicked is snared in the work of his own hands." Now here is a word that we have not seen before that is used, and it says, "Higian," and then it says, "Sila." Now, the word "higian" occurs three times in the book of Psalms. It is found here in Psalms 9 and 16. We're going to find it again in Psalm 19 and 14. And we're going to find it again later in Psalm 92 and 3. And what we find is that it is a musical sign. It's denoting a pause in the instrumental interlude. Remember Psalms? Psalms is like, there's Psalms, there are praises unto God. And the "sela" lets us know sometimes that there is a brief pause. But now we have, in the 16th verse, which I will reread, we have "higian" and also "sila." So it's saying that there could possibly be a delay or a pause in the musical instrument, as well as in pausing to think about that scripture. So let us look again at 16. "The Lord is known by the judgment which he executed; the wicked is snared in the work of his own hands." Then it says, "higian," "sila," which is letting us know we need to pause and think about that thing, that the Lord is letting us know that his judgment, which he is executing, that the wicked is going to be snared in the work of his own hands. And then later, we learn in the New Testament, something that's similar to that, is "Be not deceived; God is not mocked; whatsoever a man soweth, that shall he also reap." So he's telling us, be careful, be very careful, because God, we will be tried, we will be judged according to what we do. So the wickedness, we need to stop. Verse 17, "The wicked shall be turned into hell and all the nations that forget God; for the needy shall not always be forgotten; the expectation of the poor shall not perish forever. Arise, oh, Lord; let not man prevail; let the heathen be judged in thy sight. Put them in fear, oh, Lord, that the nations may know themselves to be but men." "Sila." All right, so this is helping us to know that all wickedness comes originally with the wicked one from hell. And those who continue in sin must go to the place of torment. It tells us that David here is encouraging the people to wait on God. He's saying to the people of God, just wait on him for his salvation. Though it should be long deferred, God will make it appear that the never did, that he never did, forget us. The lovers are relating that today as we move quickly to chapter 10. Amen. That what we're going through right now in the pandemic, many of us are saying, "Lord, how long, how long must we go through this? All of the wickedness, seems like the government is wicked, it seems like everything else that's going on is hurting us, that there's no love for God, no love for God's people, that we have social unrest, we are going through so much, the loss of jobs, the loss of businesses, and it's like, Lord, how long are we going to go through all of this wickedness? But this verse is reassuring us that God knows, God is in control, and at the right time, God will make it appear that we never had gone through this before. There is a blessing behind all of this. We must keep pressing our way. If we keep pressing, there will be a blessing at the end. Know that God sees and that God hears." As we look now at Psalm 10, it begins by saying, amen, just a little one, "Why standest thou afar off, oh, Lord? Why hidest thou thyself in times of trouble? The wicked in his pride doth persecute the poor; let them be taken in the devices that they had imagined; for the wicked boasteth of his heart's desire, and blessed the covetous, whom the Lord abhorred. The wicked, through the pride of his countenance, will not seek after God. God is not in all his thoughts; his ways are always grievous; thy judgments are far above out of his sight; as for all his enemies, he puffeth at them. He hath said in his heart, 'I shall not be moved; for I shall never be in adversity.'" Verse seven, "His mouth is full of cursing and deceit and fraud; under his tongue is mischief and vanity. He sitteth in the lurking places of the villages; in the secret places doth he murder the innocent; his eyes are privately set against the poor. He lieth in wait secretly, as a lion in his den. He lieth in wait to catch the poor; he doth catch the poor when he draws him into his net." Verse 10, "He crouches and unbelittens himself; when the poor may fall by his strong ones." The psalmist now is complaining in verses one, and we can add verse 11 to it. "He hath said in his heart, 'God hath forgotten; he hideth his face; he will never see it.'" In these verses, the psalmist is complaining of the wickedness of the wicked. Amen, he's complaining. God's withdrawings are very grievous to his people, especially in times of trouble. We must stand afar off from God by our own unbelief, and then we complain that God stands off from us, when it's really we who back away from God. We back away in our prayer life, we back away in our reading God's word and studying the word of God, we back away in our worship and fellowship with God. But then we say it's God who's backing away from us. Sometimes the wicked lives without prayer, and that in living without God, they have many thoughts, they have many objections and many devices, and they think not of the Lord when they should be thinking of God first. In verses 12 through 18, we find, "Arise, oh, Lord, oh, God; lift up thine hand; forget not the humble; wherefore doth the wicked condemn God. He hath said in his heart, 'Thou wilt not require it; thou hast seen it; for thou beholdest mischief and spite, to requite it with thy hand; the poor committed himself unto thee; thou art the helper of the fatherless.'" Amen. "Break thou the arm of the wicked and the evil man; seek out his wickedness till thou findst none." The Lord is king forever and ever, hallelujah. "The heathen are perished out of his land." Lord, thou had heard the desire of the humble; thou wilt prepare their heart; thou wilt cause thine ear to hear, to judge the fatherless and the oppressed, that the man of the earth may no more oppress. Praise God. The Lord is saying to us, and making sure that we know that a psalmist here speaks about astonishment, that at the wickedness of the wicked and at the patience of the forbearance of God, that God prepares the heart. that God prepares the heart for prayer, by kindling holy desires and strengthening our most holy faith, fixing the thoughts and raising the affections. And then, he graciously accepts the prayer. Beloveds, it's reminding us to pray without ceasing. That we should be praying daily, praying to God the Father, asking him, be specific in our prayers, that we are asking him for whatever it is that we are asking God for. But we must commit ourselves unto God, humble ourselves, trusting in the mercies of God. God will rescue us, beloveds, from every temptation. And he will break the arm of every wicked oppressor. God will eventually bruise Satan under his feet. Satan has no power other than the power we give him, and we should give him none. But in heaven alone will we, all the sins and the temptations, will be gone. But while we live on earth, we will be tempted, as Jesus was tempted in the book of Matthew four and Luke four. He was tempted and trialed. But we have to be like Jesus and resist the devil. And he said, "Get be hence Satan; for it is written, Thou shalt worship the Lord thy God, and him only shall thy servant." Amen. I pray that you have enjoyed this lesson today on Psalm eight, nine, and ten. And next week, our assignments are to read Psalms eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, and fifteen, as we come back for next week, August twenty-sixth, Psalm eleven, Psalms eleven through fifteen. I just want to leave you with this thought today. Our ending thought is, don't think of things that you didn't get after you prayed. But think of the countless blessings you have received when you didn't even pray. May God be with you to death. Bless you and think on these things.